Very good. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call the meeting to order. Pennington County Planning Commission Meeting, November 10, 2025. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from the agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on November 18, 2025, at 10:30 a.m. Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. If you're an applicant or a representative of the applicant, you won't need the speaker request form. First thing is roll call with Lori on Zoom. Everybody's here. You got that, Jerry? All right. I would take it that you've all had a chance either on the Internet site or in a hard copy, look at the minutes from the October 27, 25 meeting of the Planning Commission. If so, the Chair would accept a motion to approve them.
I make a motion to approve?
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the Planning, Pennington County Planning Commission minutes of October 27, 2025. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, that's right. I'll slow down a little, Lori. I remember that there's slight delay. I assume you voted to approve the minutes.
Yes, I went as fast as I could and you caught me.
I know, thank you. Let's go on to item number two, approval of the agenda. My comments are the same. I had a chance to review it either in a hard copy or on the Internet site. If so, Chair would address a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So move?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the Pennington County Planning Commission for November 10, 2025. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Did we not do a motion on that? Is that why you're looking at everybody? Okay. We did get a second on the motion, didn't we? Okay, I'm sorry. All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Hand, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number four is conditional use permit review, C U R 1618, for Richard and Susan Raposa to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval. Item number five is conditional use permit review, C U R 1827, for John and Vicki Hanson to review a recreational vehicle to be used no more than 180 calendar days and also to allow a carport to cover the recreational vehicle in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval. Item number six is conditional use permit review, C U R 2119, for Boyd and Sabrina Knutson to review living in a recreational vehicle while building a cabin in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval. Item number seven is conditional use permit review, C U R 2120, for Boyd and Sabrina Knutson to review an accessory structure, a bath house, as a primary structure in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval. Item number eight is conditional use permit review, C U R 2214, for 413 LLC to review storage units in a commercial district, and staff recommends to end conditional use permit review, C U R 2214, as the use has not been established. Item number nine is conditional use permit review, C O C U R 24-0026, for James and Don Murphy to review an accessory dwelling unit in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval. And item number 10 is plan unit development overlay review, P U R 2204, for John and Tracy Weeby to review a specialty resort to include three tent spots, one treehouse with living quarters, and caretaker manager's residence, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Brittany. Does the staff have any of these that you would like pulled?
No, not at this time.
Is there any that the commission would like to have pulled?
10.
Number 10. Anyone from the audience here that's got an item they want pulled on that? Lori, anything?
No.
Thank you. All right. Chair to address a motion to approve the agenda with item number 10 pulled.
I make that motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with item number 10 removed. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried on to item number 10.
Question.
Okay.
We're being asked to approve caretaker residence, three tents for luxury camping, treehouse. Do we have any pictures of treehouse and things like that?
It hasn't been constructed yet. That's why there is, it has not at all.
Okay, and then the bathroom and shower house?
That has not been constructed either. The only thing that is there is the.
Yeah, I saw those pictures.
Yeah, the manager.
That's caretaker's house.
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve Plan Unit Development Overlay Review, P U R 2204, with 26 conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Plan Unit Development Overlay, P U R 22-04, with 26 conditions, per staff's recommendation to approve. Is there a discussion from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried on to item number 11.
Item number 11 is conditional use permit, C O C U 24, or excuse me, 25-0019, to allow the use of an existing tiny home as an accessory dwelling unit. This property is located at 4715 Mesa Drive. The zoning is suburban residential district. Staff is actually recommending to continue this conditional use permit to the November 24, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, as it needs to be re-advertised.
All right, thank you. Is Mr. Brown on Zoom?
Yes.
All right. Then you must have got ahold of him and told him we was getting continued.
I believe Christine has spoken with the applicant.
All right. That's what I thought when I saw that he wasn't on there. Anyone here to speak on item number 11 from the audience? Chair to address a motion.
Move to continue to the November 24 meeting, per staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded to continue, per staff's recommendation, C O C U 25-0019, to the November 24, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried on to item number 12. Good morning, Jason.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 12 is Minor Plan, C O M P L 25-0002, to subdivide and create lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 of Andreessen, Andreessen's acres. The applicants are Kevin and Tanya Andreessen. Other affected landowner is Shoreline Properties LLC. Their surveyor and engineer is Two A Design Group. Location of the properties are 23795 Chuck Wagon Court. Size of the properties combined is 78.41 acres. Currently zoned agriculture district. Access is off Chuck Wagon Court and Windmill Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Staff did approve layout plan, C O L P L 25-0012, on May 1 of this year. As you can see on the screen, all those conditions where applicable were approved, or have been So this does concern two separate properties. One of the properties is 68.38 acres, and the other property is 10 acres. It contains a single-family residence, detached garage, carport, and a utility shed. This is kind of an eye test, but this is what they're proposing here. So Lot 1 is going to be 11.16 acres, and it's outlined in red on the screen. Proposed Lot 2 is outlined in green, and that'll be 10.28 acres. Proposed Lot 3 is in blue, 10.08 acres. And lastly, proposed Lot 4 is identified in pink at 46.58 acres, and that lot will contain the single-family residence, detached garage, carport, and utility shed. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and the Highway Department did state that all of these lots will need to be incorporated into the Kiefer Road, Kiefer Ranch Road District. Emergency Services approved the road name. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicants are requesting to reconfigure two lots in order to create four of them. Any conditions of approval not met at this time will be met before the Planning Director signs the mylar. And lastly, staff did note that Bison Boulevard should be renamed to Bison Loop. I did reach out to the surveyor, and they had no problems with that. As you can see on the map here, this dotted line that loops around is more appropriately named as a loop. So with that, staff does recommend approval of Minor Plan, C O M P L 25-0002, with conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason? Go ahead, Mike.
What's the notch on number four?
What in the world is in there?
It's just a property line. You're talking about this here.
Down in the bottom of the right-hand corner there, yeah.
Yep, that's just the way the lot line is configured. It's like that as it exists today. As you can see, that is just part of a separate lot.
Okay. I was just curious if something was in there. Okay, that's the only thing I've got.
Any other questions for Jason? Your applicant here want to speak?
I don't believe they have anything to say.
All right. Hearing no other questions, Chair to address a motion.
Make a motion that we approve Minor Plan, Comp 25002, with four conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Comp 25-0002, with four conditions, per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried on to item number 13.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we discuss 13, 14, and 15 together, but vote on them separately.
Is there a second to that motion? Moved and seconded to discuss items number 13, 14, and 15 together. It's my job to advise you, that's got to come out of two-thirds of vote to pass, and also, we will still have to address on an individual basis the vote on each 12, 13, no, 13, 14, and 15. Any discussion from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. You may discuss or direct your attention to item, and that would be also for a speaker request form. You can speak on the item as a joint item. Go ahead, Jerry.
Sounds good. Agenda item number 13 is Preliminary Plan, C O P P L 25-0011. Agenda item 14 is Comprehensive Plan Amendment, C O C A 25-0010. And agenda item number 15 is Rezone, C O R Z 25-0012. All of these requests concern the same property. The applicants are John and Linda Light. Location of the property is 10585 Wheaton Road, as well as 10580 Dogwood Lane. Currently, the property is zoned agriculture district. It is a residential use and a greenhouse nursery on the property. Access is off Wheaton Road and Dogwood Lane, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Staff did do a layout plan on this. Those conditions of approval are on the screen. As you can see, they've all been met where applicable. It is zoned agriculture district, like I mentioned. This is what they're proposing. So Lot 1 is identified in the green block above, and it is 2.55 acres. It does contain four greenhouses, a light commercial building, a tool shed, a storage shed, and a cold storage building, as well as a legal non-conforming onsite waste water treatment system. Lot 2 is 1.25 acres, contains a single-family residence, a detached garage, carport, and as well as a legal non-conforming onsite waste water treatment system. All of the requests were sent out for interdepartmental review, and there were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that they are subdividing to create lots 1 and 2 of light subdivision. Lot 1 contains Black Hills Nursery, a greenhouse that's been in operation since 1961. The reason for the request is that the property owner is seeking to get insurance on his property, and it's difficult when he's got a commercial business, as well as his residence on the same lot. Give me one second to get to the rezone request. So the Board of Commissioners did approve a lot size variance for Lot 1, so the 2.55 acres could remain in agriculture district and allow that business to continue operations. So the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the Rezone request concern only Lot 2, as you can see at the bottom of the screen. Current zoning, what we evaluate, the current zoning is agriculture district. All the metrics for that are underneath. Future land use is identified as neighborhood commercial, and the proposed zoning is low-density residential, which is a one-acre minimum lot size. Staff does look at current zoning within one-half mile, as well as future land use within that same distance. Current zoning is on the left-hand side of the screen, future land use is on the right. And again, you can see here on the screen, it is proposed to be 1.25 acres. Staff does recommend approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment, C O C A 25-0010, as well as rezone, C O R Z 25-0012. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
All right, I do have a speaker request form, Cynthia or Glenn Krapp.
Yeah, I have to have you come up and introduce yourself, just for the record, Cynthia. There's people actually listening to this. Go right ahead. Cynthia Krapp, we're a neighbor to the lot in question here, and we're just here in support. We have no opposition to this change for rezoning.
Are you also on the road?
Yes.
I thought so. And there is no plans, or changes, or guidelines for you to go by? It's basically everybody tries to stay happy with each other.
That's correct. It's a small road. We have four neighbors on our side of the road. It's a gravel road at this time. We have a road district. We occasionally resurface it with new gravel, but we don't have any plans in place at the time for any upgrades or changes. So there's no opposition from the road district either.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Cynthia? Thank you very much. Scott, was there anything that you wanted to add? Please, you have to introduce yourself for the record, Scott.
Officially, I'm John Light, but I go by Scott.
Yeah.
Now, I explained it pretty good. We want to just divide the house off, and we're having trouble keeping insurance because the homeowners think somebody get hurt on the nursery and sue the homeowner's insurance. We've been turned down by a lot of companies, and we just thought, well, we'll get it done now. Someday, we may want to retire. It'd be easier to split everything off.
But your purpose is to clean it up right now so that you can have it?
So we can keep operating the nursery.
Right.
Yeah.
Questions for John or Scott? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, Jason, if you want to come up? Chair would address a motion. Let's see, item number 13 is the Preliminary Plan would be the first one. Chair would address a motion in that matter.
So move to approve, per staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Preliminary Plan, C O P P L 25-001, with seven conditions, per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carried on to item number 14.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept C O C A 25-0010, with conditions.
Go ahead, second? Kevin? Been moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, C O C A 25-0010, and no conditions are allowed on a comprehensive amendment, so we're clear. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried on to item number 15, Rezone.
Motion to approve?
You guys speak really quick.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, Rezone, C O R Z 25-0012, per staff's recommendation. There are no conditions to a rezone. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Let's see, I'm flipping through my pages here. Item number 16.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Brittany Hand, Planning Director. Item number 16 is Minor Plan, C O M P L 25-0003, to subdivide and create Lot 2A and Lot 2B of Hanson Heights subdivision. The applicants are Matt and Paula Martin. The surveyor engineer is all aspects. This is located at 13655 Highway 40. It is zoned agriculture district, and there is no special flood hazard area on the subject property. Currently, the property consists of a single-family residence and a guest house. The reason for the subdivision is that the property owners would like to utilize one of the dwellings as a vacation home rental. And if you remember, with the guest house ordinance, a guest house was not allowed to be used as a rental. It was for personal use only, and there was a deed restriction on it. With this subdivision, that would become a single-family dwelling, and it would be able to be used as a vacation home rental. If you look at the lots here, Lot 2A would be 15.39 acres, which would meet the minimum lot size for agriculture district. Lot B would be 16.35 acres, and the minimum lot size for agriculture is 10 acres. So there's no rezone or Comprehensive Plan Amendment required. There is an existing 40-foot wide access easement that accesses both of these properties. If there is any future subdivision of Lot 1, Lot 2A, or 2B, staff would like that easement named, and there will be additional right-of-way required for dedication. With that, staff is recommending approval of this with conditions.
Questions for Brittany? And there's no, is the applicant here want to speak?
He is in the audience, if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Well, hearing none, the Chair to address a motion.
Move to approve, per staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, C O M P L 25-0003, with four conditions. Discussion, won't be any from the audience, from the commission. I've just got one. I see you did cover getting the operating license in your condition number four.
Yes, that is a condition prior to the mylar being signed.
Did that, more for the record than anything, but I didn't want to cough at the same time. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried on to number, what, 16?
17.
Yeah, I think it is. No, 17. Yeah, just your little memo, whoop-de-doo.
So item 17 is Ordinance Amendment, O A 25-16, for Pennington County, to amend Section 317 to an alternative energy of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. This was advertised for this meeting in the event that the Planning Commission needed additional time, but since the Planning Commission recommended approval and moved it on to the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners did hear this ordinance amendment at their November 4 meeting, to which they took public testimony, and they continued it to the December 16, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Any questions for Brittany on the ordinance or the Board of Commissioners meeting?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Brittany, can you tell us what, was it the same discussion at the Board of Commissioners meeting as we had had, same, kind of the same public comments?
Yes, there was concerns with the zoning districts in which they were allowed, and the setbacks were a lot of the discussion. They wanted an opportunity to have more time to review and have some public meetings. So that's the reason for the continuance till December 16, was to gather more information.
Thank you.
So there's supposed to be a meeting at Senior Citizen on the West Side, November 20th, at 6 o'clock, and then December 10th, New Underwood is a community.
The community center.
Community center. At 6 o'clock, because they wanted more night meetings, so that way they could, and even, hopefully, the people that are for or against are both there and have comments. I'm hoping so. I like to go to both. We'll see if I can go the night when I can't drive at night, but I'll see if someone can take me.
Just a question, how do you guys handle your public meetings so that all of you aren't there at the same time having an official meeting?
You have to, no, you have to, we'll notice it, so that way, any of us that want to go, that's how you do the public meeting.
That's what I was wondering, because that was why they used to always have the Planning Commission do the committee stuff, you know? That was one of the reasons, was that you avoid, on the public meetings, having the commission sitting there. You didn't want many more of the commissioners than, so it wasn't a court.
Right. They'll notice those meetings on their meeting agenda, so if there's more than three commissioners, they, it's a public meeting and it's noticed.
Okay.
And we didn't have the same comment, because we didn't have a lot of people. I think they were looking at those areas of continuing, so that's why I don't think there was as much comment. And I never have a problem with more meetings with the public, so it's an ordinance, you already know from the other ordinances, we worked on that one six months. How long did it take for mineing? A year and probably a year to get through. Vacation home rental, a couple of years, and then this thing, six months, and then go to the planning. So I believe it needed more time and more information. For me, I keep looking at more stuff, so I was ready for some of the stuff, because I've been, you already know, when we first did this, me and Brittany and I don't remember who was on the committee, when we did the first time, we had Jen Pro and a bunch of other ones on the first committee for alternative energy. So I've been looking at this, or seeing a lot of this stuff for, I don't know how many years, so.
Mr. Chair?
Go right ahead.
Are any of the Planning Commission members planning to attend any of the public
I'm not. If that's what you, anyone else planning to go to?
I might try.
I might try too.
Matt and John, me.
I'm just curious.
I think it's a pleasure to see the public meetings, so it certainly would have been, and you know, I voted against it, but I like to see the public meetings. It's a different atmosphere out there when it's not in here before the commission, and you well know that, and.
Hopefully, they're civil.
Well, yeah, but that's our job to keep them civil, you know?
Most of the time, it was.
Yeah. Good.
And there's no problem with us attending those public meetings?
No, I think they'll be noticed, and I will let the commission office know that the Planning Commission would be included as. No, I think they'll be noticed, and I will let the commission office know that the Planning Commission would be included as that too.
Thank you.
Anything else for Brittany on this, what would we call it, continued ordinance amendment? Well, we're going to move on. We don't need to do anything on it. Brittany's got a hold of it and the Board of Commissioners got a hold of it. So now we're on to what, item seventeen or eighteen? Eighteen. We don't need one this time for the record. County Board report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from their October twenty-seventh meeting.
Questions for Brittany on that? Okay, we're going to move on to twenty. There, anyone from the public want to speak? No? Items from the staff?
Just the building permit report. We're staying steady with, kind of consistent with twenty-twenty-four. Numbers are down a little bit, but it's pretty consistent still.
Thank you all for serving.
Do, you mean if we can't find the new building?
Hopefully, we found some new ones. Now we got six.
That's a.
Charlie!
Do we, do we get, do we do ourselves a building permit, you know, like we do work on our buildings? Or how does that handle?
They still have to get building permits within the city.
They still run it through?
It's, it's city property.
Yeah.
And they have to follow.
I just wondered. I didn't know whether they.
Has buildings in the county, they get building permits through our office.
Olligan or what?
You guys got to get your IDs and your security clearance first, so before you go in there.
Well, are you going to have emergency? Are you going to have emergency blankets in the parking lot to make it in?
Just for you.
Break the glass?
Just for you, Charlie.
Put the blanket on?
Just for you, Charlie. It has Charlie's blanket right on the front there.
All right. Anything else? Everybody knows where to go, so to speak.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So we do need security clearance? I haven't been there yet.
I haven't got a clue. Just rev the, rev the engine in the parking lot, they'll come out and get you.
I want to get the blanket for Charlie.
For FEMA out in that area, and we had to get in with our card.
Did you?
Yeah.
Do you, no, I was teasing Lori.
Okay, all right.
Just if you could bring the blanket for Charlie, that'd be good.
But you may want to stay together in groups out in the windy area out there, so.
It is windy out there.
Yeah. All right. You didn't hear that from me. Okay, items from the membership. I think we've done enough of those.
No, I meant that. Thank you for volunteering. I always, I was on the Planning Commission before, in the city, before I was on the city council. And I, that's what made me understand a lot of what goes into the ordinances and different things. Where before, if you just become a commissioner, I don't think you really think, you really don't know all of these things that you need to know. Because remember, you just come in and go, okay, what am I doing? So that made a huge difference for me. So you guys ready to be commissioners now at this time, if you would?
All right.
election coming up.
Yeah. It means go out and vote, I guess. Anyway.
Go out and vote?
Years ago, I used to know Mr. Connect, you know, and he served what, twenty, over twenty-five years on the city. I knew Bob really well, so. He served. When he was on Planning Commission for like twenty-five years for Rapid City, I think. Twenty-five or twenty-six, they don't have a get out of jail free card, so you stayed on or you, you didn't have to. We have a separation.
Charlie?
Huh?
How long you been on?
This, this is my twelfth year, so when I'm done, I'll serve twelve and, and go sit in the parking lot from now on, so.
You're done.
Well, I'll be done, you know, and.
I mean, you're done.
Oh, you're not.
You can serve twenty-five years.
Yeah, well, I get, get a year off to finish another car.
Still got thirteen to go, you just started.
All right. Anything else from the membership? Hearing that, I address a motion to adjourn. Moved in second to adjourn Pennington County Planning Commission November tenth, twenty-twenty-five. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned for this session.
For the meetings?
Yeah, and underwear.